Okay, great. Now we can get started. All right, for the record, it's August 10th, 2023, 10 o'clock AM. I'm Fallberg's Hearing Examiner for the City of Lake Stevens. This morning, we are holding a hearing on applications for master plan development and subdivision view and conditional use permit. And for that file number, L U A 20210205, the hearing format will be, we'll start off with a presentation. That will be Ms. Schmidt will give us an overview of the project. Once she's finished, we'll move on to the applicant for any comments they want to make. And then after that, we'll get to the public portion of the meeting, which is the purpose of today's hearing. And we'll make sure that everybody who wants to speak today will have that opportunity. And that will explain how to get involved when we get to that portion of the hearing. Once we're done with the public comments, we'll go back to Ms. Schmidt to answer any questions that were asked and to give her an opportunity to provide any additional information she thinks is necessary to the record. And once she's done, the applicant, as a matter of due process gets final word, and I get 10 business days to issue a decision. So with that, now one very important part of this hearing is to identify what documents are being considered for the application. Ms. Schmidt has prepared a very thorough staff report, 22 pages long. And accompanying that, she has provided me with 17 exhibits. The staff report being included is one of those, actually. I'm going to share my screen if it's possible for me to do that. Can I be enabled to share screens or somebody didn't get me?
Oh, absolutely. Let me stop my share and then there you go.
Oh, perfect. Okay, let's see now. All right. This is the one. Yeah, try this one. Okay, hopefully you all see right now, page 23 of the staff report, which is the exhibit list. As I mentioned, by state law, I'm not allowed to see any information outside of the record. That way, everybody knows exactly what information is being considered. And you all members of the public have an opportunity to, you know, know what, what, what information is being used and an opportunity to address that if you want. So what I've been given is the staff report, the applications for the additional use for a master plan development to preliminary plat. We got the preliminary plat map. We've got a design concept. We have architectural elevations. We have a design concept plan package that the public notices that went out. Your public comments. And you might want to take a look at the staff court to make sure your comments are in there. And Ms. Schmidt, is this comprehensive list of all the written comments received to date? Or have there been more?
Yes, it is a comprehensive list. And I'm actually just going to check my email to make sure there's no late coming exhibit.
Okay, great. Good to know. And then we have, you know, comments from fire and rescue. I mean, the city's Department of Public Works has reviewed this and Engineering Department, so forth. All, you know, looked at this to make sure that adequate infrastructure is provided. We have the development agreement that provides Project SEPA as the State Environmental Policy Act. That's the, where the environmental impact statement requirement comes from and is a means for the city to look at all the environmental impacts of the project. And then city PowerPoint presentation. And this is, is this, make sure I'm looking at the right. Oh, I see. It's the design concept has a lot of the important information. Plan package that's exhibit eight has a traffic impact analysis, the geotechnical reports, the preliminary stormwater analysis and the traffic report and tree retention report. So if I know a lot of the concerns out there were about stormwater issues, the fact it's in a peat area and, and that kind of thing. And you'll find a lot of those issues addressed in exhibit eight and all the reports that are attached to it. So with that, these documents are available at the city's website. And I know that at least some members of the public have been taking a look at these because we continued the hearing to give you a chance to get in there because the city's website wasn't working for a few days. This point, I just want to ask if there are any objections to entry of the staff report and exhibits one through 17 there? If there are, just go ahead and, and stop my share so I can see the participant list better. If there are any objections out there, just, just hit on the yellow hand at the bottom of your screen or unmute yourself to object. Okay, seeing hearing, no objections. Exhibits one through 17 are admitted. Ms. Schmidt, let me start again. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, nothing but the truth in this proceeding?
Yes.
Okay, great. Go ahead.
Thank you. I did check my emails and there is one exhibit I would like to add as exhibit 18. And I will gladly share my screen and I can also email it. I'm not sure how the form, I can put it in the chat if that's appropriate.
Okay.
And the exhibit is from Tom Matlock. It is dated 7/31/2023. And I'm not sure, I'm looking at my participant list because if he is not in attendance, I would like to get his comments in here. And his request was one to continue the public hearing. And then he has six more subsequent comments. And I will go ahead, I will email that to the Hearing Examiner directly and send that.
Send it to the applicant too, of course, so they have a chance to respond to it. And I'll label that as exhibit 10-0. The public comments so far, A through N, so I'll make that. Oh, any objections from, what was the gentleman's last name again?
It would be Matlack. And, and it's M A T L A C K.
Okay, any objections over his letter coming in? Okay, hearing none, then I'll go ahead and admit that as exhibit 10-0. All right.
Okay. Oh, 10-0, okay, I apologize. I labeled it as 18, so 10-0, okay, perfect. Okay. And with that, I will go ahead and start my presentation. So I will share my screen here. And with that, I just wanted to ask to make sure everyone can see my screen.
Yeah, it's visible.
If it's visible, okay, perfect. All right. Well, good morning, everyone. Thank you for part two of the public hearing for the MSR Lake Stevens CUP and the preliminary plat. As noted by the Hearing Examiner, we have a staff report that's been entered into the record, followed by exhibits one through 17. The last time I visited the site was on July 20th of this year. I would like to provide some background information as to why this proposal has been established the way it is. This project is subject to an original development agreement with the City of Lake Stevens Senior Housing. The first development agreement for this site was approved by the City Council back in 2017. The original request for this project was for senior housing and a mix of retail and office. This particular development agreement does vest the project and the current project under the existing regulations at that time in 2017. So what that means is the project proposal is subject to the regulations at that time, which included the 2014 Stormwater Manual, the 2009 City of Lake Stevens Engineering and Design Standards, along with the 2008 Critical Areas Regulations. This development agreement was actually amended recently, two years ago, back in 2021, with the new applicant or property owner, which is MSR Communities, who is the current applicant for the site. They amended the development agreement and the site plan to include single family and attached units for the site. And that changed the exhibits in the development agreement for what's required for development. And I'm showing a picture of this because the purpose is, is that when the DA was amended in 2021, the site plan that's represented here in the development agreement, which becomes vested as development code essentially. They have single family homes here and then townhomes here. The site plan layout is very consistent to what the applicant has submitted. So it is consistent with the development agreement that was approved by the City Council. So that sets the background for this particular application.
Ms. Schmidt, one quick question, sorry. Well, it's on my mind. You said that was the amendment approved by the City Council? I thought the staff court mentioned it was administrative.
I apologize. Yes, that was an administrative because it was a minor amendment to the DA. So it did not have to go back to City Council because it was just a site plan, minor amendment.
And it was my, even though it removed all the senior housing, it was considered a minor amendment, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Because the permissible uses were still allowed for that zone district, the planned business district.
Oh, I see.
So the new applicant who submitted the land use in application under the development agreement criteria was LDC, the property owners MSR Communities. There are six parcels. It's fronts along Grade Road and Hartford Road. The property size is approximately 22 acres. The applicant has applied for a conditional use permit, which includes a master design concept plan and a preliminary plat under the planned business district. Taking a look at the site, here's the aerial here. I'd like to point out north is this way because the site is angled. And Hartford Road fronts the property over here to the south. Catherine Creek runs through the property over here. And Grade Road is over here. And then we have single family residential uses over here to the west and above the site to the north. These parcels over here, this does have a residential use on it, but the back halves do have critical areas on it, as does this site over here and this site over here. These are single family uses over here. So that's just to help orientate us with the site. We can come back to this later if needed. The background information is the application was submitted back in December 2021. Both the application and the public hearing meets the public hearing requirements. In addition, a public meeting was held on January 19, 2022. And this brings me to a point to the Hearing Examiner and to the audience is that I do have a correction in my staff report. On page three, I have the public meeting date is 2023 and that should be 2022. Both the conditional use and the master design concept plan and the plat are both type three applications, which does require a Hearing Examiner review and a decision. The conditional use permit, we did held the public meeting back in January, as noted, two years ago. The SEPA DNS for the environmental threshold was just issued on May 17th of this year. Property comp plan designation and its planned business district. And the current zoning, the implementing zoning is PBD. The site itself, it's really relatively flat, but it does, it is constrained with critical areas. It has five wetlands with buffers. It does have a type F stream, which is Catherine Creek. And it does have an associated 100-year floodplain. The, the critical areas are located on the majority of the site. In fact, almost 14 acres of the site are being retained in NGPA for the critical areas protection. And in addition, there's four ditches onsite that are not regulated by the city code. But it does have state and federal jurisdiction over the ditches, which does require mitigation, which is detailed in the revised critical areas report. And myself, I'll be talking about this later on. So taking a look at the plat layout here, at least we have some graphics there. As you can see, the area in green is the majority of the site. This is the NGPA area to protect Catherine Creek and the associated wetlands. The proposal by the applicant consists of 28 single family lots, which are located here along the frontage of Grade Road. We do have private road tracks in here with public access easements. There are townhomes in here. There's approximately 29 attached townhome units. They are providing usable space with recreational and community amenities. It's approximately over, you know, 1.2 acres. The developable acreage of the site is eight acres. Lot sizes do vary between 1,100 square feet and approximately 1,000 square feet. Parking onsite, they have 249 parking spaces proposed. And what this provides is two garage spaces for each unit, along with driveway parking, which consists of a total of four spaces. They do have on-street parking. They do meet the recreational and civic use requirement for the master design concept. And they are providing, I would like to point out that this area down here along Hartford Road is not proposed to be developed this time, but will be assessed later for future development. So it is labeled as a future development track. Other design amenities include frontage and roadway improvements. The site does have two access points. Like to point that out, we have one here on the north end of Grade Road and the south end of Grade Road. There are four new private roads proposed, A through C, including one alleyway. I would like to point out that the alleyway, due to, I'm going to go back here, due to the constraints of the ditch located along here on Grade Road, there was not adequate space to provide a sidewalk without impacting that ditch. So the city has coordinated with agencies and the applicant to provide signage and a public sidewalk that comes through the plat like this and connects out to the south and the north ends in order to reduce impacts to the critical areas in the ditch onsite. Half-street improvements are required along Grade Road and is outlined in the traffic report. This does include ADA compliance ramps, a bike lane, travel lane. It will have a center planter island, along with the curb gutter, street trees, along with striping. They are required, the applicants required to provide a crosswalk on the north end, along with a bus stop for community transit and also school district. Grade Road, because of the complexity of the site constraints, it does have four different road sections. And that's outlined in the construction plans, which are in the exhibits is RD 10. And there are conditions of approval to revise to the turn radiuses on the entry and also the south end of the alley. And I'd like to point that out because it's also been a comment that was brought up by Tom Matlock also. So as noted, the proposal does have open space tracks. It does have play structure, community amenities, a public garden or a community garden, picnic tables, benches, sports courts. And many of this is provided on top of underground vaults, along with landscaping for those areas also. There are sidewalks on both sides of the roadways throughout the plat. And as far as taking a look at the trees, two trees are to be retained on the northern property boundary along the entry. And then there's also two trees to be removed on lots 12 and 30. And the applicant is required to replace those per city code. And so they have six trees that they will be replacing onsite. And in addition, every single family home needs to have two shade trees. So that's a total of 56 shade trees to be provided. So as part of the conditional use under the city's development regulations for the planned business district, they are required to do a master design concept plan. The purpose of the master design concept plan is to make sure that the site addresses civic and recreational uses, protects critical areas, provides recreational amenities, and the design of the structures are compatible with the surrounding uses and the character of the property and that the design can be supported by public facilities. And it's consistent with an economic analysis that the developer had to provide in order to use single family homes within the PBD district. So they did provide an economic analysis documenting that it does support the city's economic viability and is not detrimental to the economy of the city. And that has been included as an exhibit within the public record today. Here is what the master concept plan looks like. This is the front page of it, if you've looked at it within the exhibits. The proposed project meets the minimum density requirements and it is providing slightly over the 10% recreational requirement. That's required by code, they're providing 10.5%. These areas are outlined here in blue. These are the recreational areas within the plat. They are not the passive recreational areas, but these are the actual active recreational areas. The proposal also meets the design guidelines as far as the layout goes and landscaping proposed and the building designs. There are letters within the file with coordination and review letters from the US Army Corps of Engineer, along with DOE and the tribes who is present today, along with DFW. They have been an important part in reviewing the project proposal for compliance with critical areas regulations. So taking a look at what's being provided to the development and the community, we have here the common outdoor space is what's to be provided. They do have a gazebo up here and information sign that is to be proposed. You can see the examples of the amenities that the applicant is proposing for this area. There is a boardwalk that comes through. Here it crosses the wetland area. There's more information boards. And then there's a viewing platform at the center down here at the end. I would like to point out that originally this application, the goal was to connect this boardwalk through the wetlands out to Hartford. However, due to intrusion and impacts to the wetland, this idea was vacated, abandoned and revised midway through the process. So that is why the boardwalk does not connect to Hartford at this time and will not. It ends here and it terminates here with the viewing center. So the proposal, as proposed, does protect the wetlands. And that was done through, I'd say, coordination process through DOE, the tribes and the Army Corps, along with DFW. As you can see here, here's the additional recreational amenities to be provided, the sport court, Bocchi Communities Garden and a picnic area, just to name a few of it. Here's an example of what's being proposed as far as the educational signage and viewing areas for the area. The buildings are also required as part of the master design concept plan to provide elevations that break up the modulation of the buildings of not just the single family homes and also the townhomes. So we do have six different schemes here and I'm going to run through them. These were shared at the public meeting originally, where we did receive some feedback on them that the applicant has made a couple changes to. These are designs, I apologize for the resolution, it's a little fuzzy here. These are the different design concepts and color schemes for the townhomes for the different sized units. So with that, now we come to the critical areas mitigation portion of the plan. I included the site plans here in case there's any questions, but I would like to defer to the detailedness of the staff report that the city and the applicant have coordinated with state and federal agencies for review and compliance for the mitigation and voluntary mitigation, for the mitigation of the ditches onsite. And a new channel is to be created, which will be a fish passable channel, which will connect to Catherine Creek. So that does have a net benefit for the project with the mitigation. And I would refer you to exhibit 16B. Here's a picture of the southern end of the mitigation plan. And you can see the different areas that are noted for additional voluntary mitigation. There's quite a few of them throughout the site. This is just an example of the south end. There is more up here on the north end also. And in these areas and buffer addition here for the trails. And the additional voluntary buffer mitigation up here. Moving on to public comments, I would like to thank everyone who has participated in this project because I understand it's a, what I'd call an infill project on a area that's surrounded by single family homes. So there's been a lot of interest in it. We did have nine residents with multiple comments on this project. There is a range of various concerns concerning traffic access, pedestrian connection to Hartford. A lot of people did want that pedestrian connection. Unfortunately, that was not a viable means through the wetlands. The preservation of trees and habitat onsite, I understand the site is currently being used as passive recreation. So development of the site will obviously remove that for the surrounding residences. There has been concerns about regulations of the ditches and the fish. And in addition, sidewalk connections and the preservation of Catherine Creek and the mitigation that's previously occurred out there along Catherine Creek with the tree planting. Those areas are to be maintained and also to be enhanced. There was desires to retain retail uses in the senior housing. Those comments have all been addressed by the city and the applicant back to the residents and they've been contained within the project file. As far as compliance with the preliminary plat in the CUP, the project has been found to be compliant with the list of codes. I'm not going to read them for you. In addition, the SEPA threshold, there were four comments. They were addressed by the staff and the applicant's biologist, John Loffenberg, who is here today in case there's any questions. There were no additional mitigation measures warranted or appeals received for the proposal. Staff's findings and conclusions today find that the proposal is consistent with the CUP criteria and the master design concept criteria does meet the intent of the planned business district zone and meets the zoning district standards. And as condition, will meet the RCW requirement 5817. There are adequate utilities available to serve the plat and the procedural requirements have been met for today's public hearing. Staff's recommendation is approval to the Hearing Examiner of the preliminary plat and the conditional use project, subject to all the conditions contained in the staff report. And with that, I would like to open it up for questions.
Okay, just a few. You mentioned that there's going to be a transit bus stop in there. It'll be used for schools as well. Is that, is that for all three schools, elementary, middle and high school for the project site?
That is a great question and yes, it would be for all three.
Okay, and it's, I take it it's fully connected to all the sidewalks interior and that kind of thing to the project?
Yes, it would be, it would be up here. And so it would have full access north, south and east and west.
Great. Let's see, also, I, you know, I read over, I haven't read over the details of the geotech report yet, but read the summary and it said that in the southern portion of the site that pin foundations would be necessary because of the, the peat that, that underlays the soils there. Is that, when they say the southern portion of the site, is that the wetland area? Or is that the southern portion of the?
It would, well, area. It would be this area here with the townhomes. So the peat area here is quite extensive. It will have to be excavated. The report says approximately, I think, down to 10, 12 feet. And obviously structural fill will have to be brought in. So that is in this area down here.
Okay, yeah, because the geotech report said in the northern portion, the peat could just be taken out and replaced with fill. But in the southern, they need the pin piles because, and so, and that's that area you're talking about.
This is this area down here.
Okay, got it, got it. And then the, the economic analysis, it, the, I think it's exhibit A, A has a bunch of staff red line comments asking, you know, to be modified. Is, is that the version you intended to have in the exhibit list? Or was there like a revised version submitted after that? That's another exhibit. I couldn't find it anyway.
Yes, there should be a revised version because those comments were vetted out in my previous technical review letters with the applicant. That was from my first request back to the applicant to justify why those could not be addressed. And so those items have been addressed, so those red lines should be struck.
Oh, okay, okay. So they, they just shouldn't be there, in other words, yeah. And also, I mean, I don't, I don't know if you noticed, there's a graph in there that, that was for Normity Park, but the ratio of housing to, to jobs. I don't know, was that intentional? Or I didn't quite know why that graph was in there. It wasn't entirely clear to me and that's, that was pretty detailed, but.
That was from the applicant. And if Joe Hopper has any additional comments on that, I'd refer it to him. I believe they were looking for comparable comparisons for justification.
Okay, yeah. And one other comment related to that is, you know, they're trying to show, I think, that, that there's been a lot of retail development and activity going on. And therefore you need more housing to support it. But part of the statistics they use was the sales tax from construction, which would be include residential housing, I'm assuming. And it seems kind of odd to me to use the fact that there's more residents that's being constructed as justification for a need for more housing. I, I don't know. I mean, did, did you see any problem with that yourself or?
We did, we, we discussed that with the applicant. They had provided additional information and the city had received an update stating in 2022 that the city actually has a housing deficit related to our growth projections. And so there is a letter related to that effect. And if that is not in the project file, I should provide that to you.
Okay.
Under the project narrative.
Yeah. And then finally, on the, the critical areas review, I think I read all the letters related to that. It's so, are the tribes and Army Corps satisfied with the end result here? Or because I noticed the Army Corps said their review process would be two to three years. So I don't know if that, that seems to be still ongoing possibly. But I mean, for the most part, and the tribes too, have, have their concerns been addressed?
I believe their concerns have been addressed in the comment letters related to the SEPA document. They had provided written verification of their acceptance of the current mitigation plan, but pending the applicant's submittal of permission. But pending the applicant's submittal of permits in review and approval by each agency.
Okay.
So I am aware that John Loffenberg, the applicant, has submitted permits to the agencies. And I would defer that status to him because the city doesn't receive those until once they're approved. So if John has further comments, I would defer that to him.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Appreciate your comments. All right, let's move on to the applicant. Who do we have here on behalf of the applicant that wants to say anything at this point? Any takers? Don't have to speak, but now's your chance. Let's see.
My understanding, Joe Hopper is the main representative here today and he was going to speak.
Okay, Mr. Hopper, do you want to say anything? I see you're unmuted, so.
Yeah, I just unmuted myself.
Oh, there you go.
I don't have anything additional to add. I, I'm here for any questions from, from the public and from you, Mr. Examiner. We are, uh, one of your questions that came up was the, uh, coordination with Army Corps and Fish and Wildlife, and that is ongoing currently. Uh, we are working with them in tandem as far as all the, uh, ditches and, and regulated, uh, wetlands and streams that are on the site. And we will be continuing to work with them concurrently with the city on the final construction approvals.
Okay, great. Thanks, Mr. Hopper. Appreciate your comments.
Uh, this is, uh, Ian Folds with LDC as well on behalf of the applicant. And I would just like to add that we generally agree with the, uh, staff report that
Okay.
The city has provided.
And, and Mr. Hopper, since you provided a, a little testimony there, can I swear in for your comments you just made?
Yes, no problem.
Okay, yeah, you swear for, uh, that, uh, that all the comments made in the hearing today, including those previously made by you, or the truth or nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, sir. All right. Well, now we can finally get to the, why we have the hearing today, and that is for the, the public portion of the hearing. So, um, I think the way I'll start off is I'll just ask if any of you want to speak, uh, you know, push on the virtual hand at the bottom of your screen. I'll address those first and then, uh, if there's anybody like, that is unable to figure out how to do that, we'll, we'll work through it. Once I'm done with all the persons who have pushed their virtual hands, so. Uh, let's see, I'm not seeing any takers yet. Uh, let's see. Okay, so I think as a backup, if you're trying to speak and you don't know how, then try, uh, writing in chat that you'd like to speak. There's a, a little, you know, a little text box at the bottom of your screen that says chat. If you click on that, you should be up. I see a raised hand, Mr. Summers. Okay, let's get you in there. All right, and Mr. Summers, you'll need to unmute yourself if you could.
Okay, good.
Let, let me swear in there. Just raise your right hand. You swear for tell the truth, nothing but the truth in this proceeding.
Yes, I do.
Okay, and your last name is spelled S O M E R S. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. Go ahead.
I had a number of questions, but I'll just throw in two right now that are related to, uh, water. Um, one thought was, uh, has there been discussion about a five hundred year floodplain plan as opposed to, uh, uh, a one hundred, uh, as in the document? And secondly, um, currently the lake does not have a weir and should there be a you know, heavy rain, uh, flow from the lake, uh, backing up onto Catherine Creek, uh, has that been studied and, uh, so those are two to start off with.
Okay, oh, all right. And, and once I'm done with public comments, I'll ask, uh, staff and applicants to answer those questions if they can. And Mr. Summers, if they're not answered, uh, sufficiently, go ahead and raise your virtual hand again and I'll make sure that, that we get the information you were trying to get there. So is there anyone else out there who wants to say anything at this point? Like I say, if you're unable to, um, uh, raise the virtual hand at the bottom of your screen and don't know how to do it, try the chat box. I'm not seeing any takers on chat and, uh, um, let's see, Christie, maybe could you put your email address in the chat box? And I'll just tell, you know, everybody out there if, uh, you know, if you have, because of technical reasons or you couldn't figure out what to do, you were unable to, uh, you know, make some comments today, go ahead and email Ms. Schmidt. And then I'll give the applicant staff an opportunity to respond to your email comments or questions. Uh, just make sure to get your email in, um, by five o'clock PM tomorrow then, so. Ms. Schmidt, could you, I don't know if you can hear me, can you, um, maybe put your email address in chat? Great, that's great.
I did, yes, it is in the chat.
That's weird. It's not showing up on mine.
Okay, I put it in first thing. Um, let me go look.
Yeah.
Let me make sure I hit post. Um, oh, it was a direct message. Hold on, okay. So let me go back. I'm gonna copy it. Um, it says needing chat. Let me put it in the full chat, I guess, to everybody. Let me change this. Apologize for that.
Oh, no, no problem.
Making sure I get the correct one.
Yeah, I'm not getting, well, or maybe you could just say it, I suppose that would work too. Or of course, if anybody, you know, you can also call Ms. Schmidt over at the planning department if that doesn't work.
Now, let me see, let me see. I'm just going to the chat and I'm pulling it up and I always seem to get Jenny and Jenny, I like you, but gosh, I want everybody.
Yeah, I get her too. Yeah, isn't that huh?
Um, let me see. Uh, my email, I will say it verbally, is C S C H M I D T at lake Stevens W A dot gov.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Ms. Schmidt. Appreciate that. All right, well, and Ms. Schmidt, can you answer Mr. Summers' questions or should we?
Excuse me, Mr. Hearing Examiner, we do have one that, uh, question that came in right to my chat as well. Shall I read it?
Sure.
Yeah.
Uh, will there be any impact to the Bridgeport development just north of the proposed development?
Okay, well, I guess you have three questions you can
Tom is looking for where to raise his hand.
Oh, Tom Matlock.
Okay, uh, well, we'll just call on you right now. It doesn't look like, well, yeah, you're not muted. So you can go ahead and speak, say something and we'll see if we can hear you.
Hi, this is Tom Matlock. Thank you for entering my letter. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now. Let me swear in. Just raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm, tell the truth, nothing but the truth in this proceeding?
Yes, I do.
Okay, great. Go ahead.
So it's more of a question, the whole JARPA process, since the city does not get those applications or permits. When does the, when does the city determine that the JARPA process, which is all the state and federal agencies? When does Christie determine that all those permits are in? Will they be posted to citizens connect? Will, will, like, uh, I know the tribes are here with us today. Will they check them off as they come into citizen connect? It, it's kind of a dark area that I don't understand.
Okay, and, and Ms. Schmidt, I, I imagine part of that is they don't get final plat approval until they give you those proved permits, right? That's part of your check on it.
That is correct. And prior to construction, so they are allowed to, um, just for informational purposes. The applicant has to wait until our SEPA threshold has been issued, then they can use that to apply for their JARPA application. Once they receive approval of their JARPA that is submitted to the city. And once I receive those, and if there's a four oh one one, four oh one, HPA, or any type of those permits, they will be uploaded to the construction plan permit. So that will have a separate L U A number. Uh, I can pull that for us, um, for what
And Christie, I take it then no construction activities allowed until you've got those permits? In other words, they're not going to be able to go out and start clearing the property until you have those approved JARPAs in hand and you're gonna post them on the website as soon as you get them. Is that correct?
Absolutely. Yes, they cannot start work. And the construction plans actually won't be issued until we receive confirmation that they have all their permits from the state and federal agencies.
Thank you. And how long does, how long do they have? How long does the applicant have to secure those necessary permits for JARPA?
Well, as, as long as it takes, Tom. So it depends on the review time from the agency and I can't speak for them for their processing time. As you can see, the US Army Corps of Engineers, they seem to have a longer processing time. So I, I don't know how long they take, but the city doesn't have a restriction as long as they are working uh, and have submitted that permit and showing the progress that they're making advancement.
And, and Christie, also I, I take, from what I recall, I think, how long do they have before fin, before the preliminary plat expires? I mean, they have to apply for final plat approval, like within, is it five years?
Five years.
Five years.
Years.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that, that's, that's at least one cutoff. If you don't get their approved permits and then they do the construction for, uh, final plat, I mean, that all has, has to be done within five years too. So in other words, this isn't forever. Yeah, yeah.
No, it won't be.
And then, uh, for this, this is my last question. Thank you so much. The, uh, the DEA for the sewer district is under the same sort of loose timeline. I mean, I, I understand that the applicant wants to get going, but these things take time. So the DEA for sewer is also out there in the future somewhere?
So the applicant can speak to their timing with their develop, it's called a development agreement, extension agreement with the sewer district. They require that for the extension of the sewer mains to the site. My understanding is the applicant has started that process with the sewer district. That permit and agreement has to be secured prior to the city issuing the construction plans.
Thank you. I think that's all. And you've been, uh, the most, uh, thorough planner I've worked with in twenty years with the city. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
And I'll second that. Your staff reports are also very thorough, Ms. Schmidt. I really appreciate them. Um, all right, so Mr. Summers had a few questions there. If you remember, call them about the five hundred year floodplain review and, uh, the weir for backup.
He did. So as far as the five hundred flood year plane, I'm gonna refer that to Joe Hopper. The city, the project engineer and consultant for drainage on that. And then as far as the weir status, I actually do have good information for the public on that. Our surface water department has been working, uh, with other agencies, DOE, um, our consulting team to design a weir. A design has been selected for the weir for the city, uh, or the lake of Lake Stevens. It's actually north of City Hall that will assist in regulating the water levels of the lake for health and protection of the critical areas and also Catherine Creek, which is obviously the water from the channel here flows that way. The project status on installation of that is, I believe, the next couple years. It's supposed to go in, we have partial funding currently. And the staff contact on that is Olin Anderson. And I am aware that he's in the process of applying for more grants to receive funding for that installation of the weir because it's, it's very high on the city's surface water radar. And unfortunately, Mark, I don't have more specific dates for you, but Olin might have more because he was submitting applications, I think, a couple weeks ago. Um, but I can follow back up with you with that.
Good, that helps.
Okay. All right, we'll take it back to the applicant then for a final word. And there was the, the question, uh, I believe it was Mr. Hopper about, um, the five hundred year floodplain, if there's gonna be any, uh, accommodation for that.
There, there hasn't been any study, uh, done on five hundred year floodplain. It's not required in the code to do so. Um, so that, we haven't delved into that. Um, everything on our site, the design wise, all the finished floor elevations and the road elevations are significantly higher than the current floodplain areas. And the hundred year floodplain doesn't come close to the site. Um, we're within, I believe, over a hundred feet away from the floodplain limits along Catherine Creek for the most part. So we're not necessarily concerned with floodplain, uh, with the elevations that we're proposing on our grading plan. Uh, but we have not done any analysis on the overall, uh, five hundred year floodplain, uh, along the corridor.
Okay.
Because of our city climate change, uh, efforts.
Okay. Oh, thank you, Mr. Summers. Yeah. All right, uh, Mr. Hopper, and any other comments you want to make in conclusion or?
Nope, I think, uh, everything has been said. Thank you, Christie, so much for your thorough presentation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hopper. Okay, I'll go ahead and, uh, close the hearing and, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, uh, there is another question in the chat that came in from Dave Baldwin.
Okay.
In my chat, I don't.
Yeah, it looks like it's because for whatever reason, the chat function only is a direct message to, to you. So that, yeah, you're, you're the lucky recipient today, Ms. Frant. Yeah, what was that? What was the question?
Do you want me to read it or Dave, do you want to read it?
I'll read it. Yes, I'm, I'm, this has probably been discussed in the past and I, maybe I missed it, but is the applicant also the builder of all these structures? Or will there be other builders coming in, um, you know, to develop condos and, and homes? And is it possible to estimate the approximate asking prices of these homes and condos?
Okay, Mr. Hopper, can you answer that question?
I can answer the question from the perspective of the market values that they will target are similar to the same footprints of surrounding neighborhoods. Um, MSR does build their own product onsite, uh, both the townhomes and the single family residences. Uh, we've done multiple projects with them, uh, and so I can get, I can assure you that that's the intent at this point is that the MSR developers will be building their, their products, uh, on this onsite. And they will be at market, market rate, whatever that rate is at the time of, uh, the construction.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Hopper and, uh, everyone else. And, uh, you know, I, I realize that there's been a lot more public interest, a number of speakers today. And, uh, believe me, the, your, your written comments are gonna be given as, uh, much weight as, as the verbal ones today. I, I pretty much, I have like a quick, uh, computer generated transcript made so that I, I'm sure to catch all the comments made at the hearing. And then I read all the, uh, written ones as well. I write, uh, pretty thorough decisions that address all the comments and, and everything else. Uh, I, it's, as I sometimes have to say in, in, in other jurisdictions, it doesn't sound like maybe as much here. You know, this isn't a, uh, a legislative decision where it's based on number of votes or number of people opposed to a project. It's more like a judicial forum where, uh, I just have to determine whether or not the, the permitting criteria are met. You know, I mean, and the example I'd like to give is you wouldn't go, go to a, a, a murder trial and tell the judge, I vote in favor of conviction. You know, it doesn't work that way. And that's, that's, uh, that's the way my proceeding works as well as I have to follow the law basically. And if the code permits it, it's, it's permitted. Um, there, there, there are questions about the, the five hundred year floodplain from, uh, Mr. Summers. And, and, you know, I can say that, that, uh, you know, that, that the, uh, stormwater regulations adopted in Lake Stevens are very similar to the ones that are adopted by all, you know, two hundred and twenty cities in the, in the state and all the counties as well. By state law, they have to adopt some minimum requirements, which are very extensive, but they only go up to a hundred year floodplain. The five hundred year isn't required. I don't think any jurisdiction does require it for that, you know, that, that kind of unlikely occurrence. And so that's why it wasn't, you know, it's not unusual that the five hundred year floodplain wasn't addressed here because that, that's pretty standard across the board. And those stormwater regulations are updated all the time and based on, you know, the, the latest developments in stormwater, um, controls and technology and that kind of stuff. So, so, uh, the state of stormwater regulations is in, in pretty good shape as far as I've seen as a hearing examiner. But anyway, I'll get that, uh, you know, that decision out in ten business days. That's a couple of weeks. And, uh, if anyone wants to get a copy, make sure that, uh, um, Ms. Schmidt has your address or your, the email address. And Ms. Schmidt, I, I take it you probably prefer email addresses, right? So you don't have to send, uh, waste a lot of paper sending out mailed copies. Is that right?
That is correct. And then in my email to the parties of record, I'll ask them if they want a hard copy mailed. And then if they request that, I will also send them that.
Okay, all right. And I got, uh, Ms. Frant, is there another question?
Yes, the first one that I spoke about wasn't addressed yet. Um, will there be any impact to the Bridgeport development just north of the
Okay, and Ms. Schmidt, maybe you can answer that one?
Oh, excuse me, I better unmute myself first. So the Bridgeport development is up along here. I have heard from a couple residents up there. Um, they would not have any impacts with the exception of they might, obviously they're going to hear or see noise. One from the pin pile and construction noise. And then they also will likely hear and see the creation of the new fish passable channel that will border along here along Catherine Creek. But they shouldn't have, and depending what lot they are, I, I'm not sure who's asking. Uh, these lots here, one, three and two, or one, two and three. Um, they will obviously have impacts up here regarding the construction of the road in the house.
And I couldn't remember, Ms. Schmidt, is there gonna be fencing, or was that a, I can't see that, is that a road that separates the, the plat from?
This is a road with a sidewalk.
Okay.
And then here would have more than likely a six foot cedar fence. And then this would have the split rail barrier fence for the critical areas.
Okay, okay, gotcha. All right, great. Okay, all right, thanks, Ms. Schmidt. And thank you again, everybody else, and we are adjourned for this morning. So have a great day. Thanks for, uh, participating with us. And thank you again, everybody else, and we are adjourned for this morning, so have a great day. Thanks for participating with us.
Thank you.